I call the order this budget workshop like we tell the city councils Tuesday, June 26th. I'll call please.
Councilman Sicaro, Councilman Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Sicilio.
Here.
Councilmember Alian. Mayor Eulen.
Here.
Mike Sicaro is having some health issues right now. He really wanted to be here and he expresses his condolences not being able to be here and Mr. Alian should be here very shortly. We'll have a pledge allegiance if our vice mayor, Christian Clark, please.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment period. Any member of the voters may now address the council for three minutes on any item not on the agenda. You have to do that three minutes. Please state your name just for the record please. Anybody else who can address the council?
Hi, Mr. Becky Smith. I want to thank Councilwoman Sicaro for his service with the city council and also the planning commission. I'm sorry to hear there's not the little folks who I've heard is doing a tremendous job while he was here in K C.
Thank you. Roll screen. Anybody else like to address the council? Okay, public comment period is now closed. What we have is anybody else?
There's one back there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, come on, come forward please tonight. Sorry.
I just wanted to thank City Mayor from checking on Flumis Avenue, Waringdale. Just want to thank you guys for setting up the patrol and speed monitoring. We saw some issues going on. Can't thank you from everybody on Flumis Avenue, the people that you talk to on the area. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else like to address the council? Okay, public comment period is closed. We're now on item four. We'll be discussing the proposed budget for fiscal year 2012, 2013. What we're going to do is start the discussion off with a presentation of our city manager, Dan Dawson. He'll go through the overall background of the budget and so forth. Then we have approximately five resolutions for this one by one and then we'll go ahead and pass the public comment and so forth and then he'll approve his three resolutions. Dan, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks everyone for being here tonight, this afternoon. We're going to kind of give a little refresher course on budget, talk about where we get our funding from, where we spend it, when it gets here and when it leaves here. Kind of our budget 101, rehash here. And then I'll bring up the budget itself. If you take any questions, if you'd like, I can go over each line in the budget or if you just take specific questions. And then I will ask for your approval for basically six items. You can take those one at a time or all at once. These are normal routine items that we have to do every year. State law requires us to adopt the budget before the first of July. This is a balanced budget that we're asking to be adopted here. I'd like to thank the staff for their help and for the members of the council that have been on the negotiating committee and the budget committee. I didn't have a nice picture of Dennis to show him. Not even going to waste it since he's not here. I was going to show him hard work during the budget subcommittee meeting. Oh, what the heck, I'll show it. Here's Dennis at the last budget. He's actually working with us here cleaning golf carts.
After he's done using it, right?
So, budget timing. This is where we get our funding from. As you can see, 23% of our funding comes from add-on sales tax, which is the 1% add-on sales tax that was voted with an 86% approval rate last November. So, thank you to all of the employees for getting the word out on that, the hard work that the council did in getting the word out and talking to people in the city, letting them know how important that is for us. And then the rate of sales tax is very important to us, of course. Luckily, we have commercial establishments on each end of the town that provide that sales and add-on tax. Safeway and Stone Creek. Property tax, about 30%. Other taxes, license and permits, including business license, about 10%. So, when do we get the money in? Property tax, 30% of our revenue. We get a Christmas crescent in December. Santa Claus drops half of our property tax allotment. And then again in April, the Easter bunny brings the other half. I kind of talked a little bit about sales and use tax, which is the add-on tax. We get that monthly, but it's always a two to three month delay. So, for example, for April, May and June, which have been the second quarter, we would receive that in mid-August. So, we won't receive April, May and June until the middle of August. So, I've already calculated what that's going to be and sales taxes have been up statewide as well as here in the city. So, that's a good thing. Business licenses, we get most of those actually before July 1st and we kind of set those aside and then account so that they're accrued actually in the month of July. Our biggest contributor, of course, is Safeway. Probably 75% of all our business license money comes from Safeway. And then we get franchise fees for cables, water, sewer, electric and Eugene gas. Most of those come in. So, that's what our revenue flow chart looks like. We get the big boost in July from all of the business license collections. That's pretty flat. December, we get the big jump due to the half of the property tax revenue. Then it goes back down again, pretty flat. Then we get the big jump in April where we get 50% property tax as well as franchise fees. And then it drops back down again for the last couple of months of the year. The reason I show this, I show this to the council is because we do a report, a budget report. It is a monthly report. It's month-to-date and it's on a cash basis. So, for example, at the end of November, it's looking pretty bleak. If you were looking at that thinking, well, this is a linear process we're in, you think, well, we're in trouble here at the end of November. And then if you were to look at it, you know, the end of December, beginning of January, you go, wow, this is great. Our revenue's way up. So, that's kind of why I go over this budgeting 101 and talk about the timing of our revenues. So, where do we spend our money? Pretty common for most cities our size. Actually, we may be a little bit low on salaries and benefits, something 3%. You know, we contract out our fire service. We contract out our automotive services. Our planning and engineering services are contracted out. So, that's where we spend our money. And then the timing again. We have to pay for dispatch services to the county in July. What they do is they bill us in arrears. So, they basically bear the cost during the whole fiscal year. And then comes July, it's, you know, they threw everything up and sent us a bill to pay for the last fiscal year. That amount is between $40,000 and $45,000 a year that's due in July to the county, the 9/11 communication center. 35% of our insurance premiums for liability and workers' compensation are due in July. We have a membership dues that are due in July. $14,000 is to Fora. That's a pay-to-play voting membership for Fora. So, that is also due in July. Good evening, Councilmember Alian.
Good evening.
Grand joke. That's my excuse. That's a good one. That is a terrible. And then we see payroll. You know, we have the events at Laguna Seca. These fine gentlemen that you see in the audience here providing services for the races for which we are reimbursed. You'll see the overtime and reserve salaries kind of spike towards the beginning of the fiscal year and that's because all the events that are held out there. And then fire contract was paid orderly to the city of Seaside. Dennis' favorite expense is for audit. We're paying in January. And that's going to be going down because we don't have new government agency anymore. So, we're going to need a modicum and see if we don't have. So, you'll see that change in the budget as well. So, that's kind of how our expenses work out. So, it's a good match at the beginning of fiscal year because we get in a lot of revenue for business license fees. And that goes right in the left hand and right out the right hand to pay for dispatch services and insurance. So, for our new budget starting this fiscal year, I already went over sources and uses in the flow. Bottom line for our budget for this past, this fiscal year that we're in now through the end of June, we're 6% over budget. Sorry, Dennis. Revenue is 6% over expenses. Property tax has still dropped a little bit, you know, and I was really concerned about that because I don't see a lot of movement in the city. And I was always under the impression that we had a lot of people here that were longtime residents and that, you know, that people really didn't move much. And so, I called Michael Miller's office, the governor controller, and the tax assessor's office. And I asked him, well, you know, what's going on? Something's not right about this. And we have a lot of people that have been here forever. They don't move. He said, well, that's not quite true. So, we actually had a turnover of about 182 units and most of that turnover is in the condos. And that's what's caused our property tax revenue to slightly tail off. He did tell me that, you know, this year they're going to be flat. He also said that, you know, 3% is nothing. Greenfield was 35% now. That's fiscal year, which is a, you know, pretty big hit. Sales taxes, Dennis calculated that almost to the T. We actually got a couple thousand dollars more in sales tax than we forecast. And other revenue in this fiscal year is up 22% over budget. And a lot of that is due to the fact that I went to our insurance carrier and asked him to reimburse some expenses for employee termination a couple years ago and see if we could get back. So, that's one-time, that's one-time money and I, you know, I want you to know that I recognize that and that's been addressed. So, our budget, there's our budget versus actual for expenses. We're 3% over budget on expenses. Salary, we're actually a little bit low and that's 73% of our budget. So, we were actually about $3,000 lower in the budget category. And outside services were up by 8%. And it's really hard to predict how many calls for service we're going to get from Seaside Fire. And those calls are about $2,250 every time someone calls an ambulance or for a ride over to Chomp. And we've had a couple of months where we had 10.
How much was it?
Twenty-two fifty for each visit? Yeah. Yeah, so we had a couple of months where we had 10. You know, so we're talking about $25,000 in one month for basically ambulance rides. So, Chief and I are looking at other models that will be more costly for the city. So, we'll have more information on that at some point in the future.
Is that using a modified Porsche to transport you?
So, here's the bottom line for this fiscal year. You know, there's our revenue, there's our expenses. Overall, $60,000 available to reserves and or capital. And this proposed budget that I'll show you in a minute, based on that on the actual revenue we received in this fiscal year minus the one-time revenue, which was about $120,000 plus for the insurance. Overall expenses, just slightly higher percent. So, there is a revenue and expense forecast right there. Very conservative. You know, I'm not counting on any change in property tax. I'm not counting on any sales tax increases, although those things are looking good. I would rather, I would rather forecast low than come in high. Then you can say, what a great job you're doing. Rather than forecast high, you come in low and say, you know, this guy get it together.
Yeah.
Now, I'll show you the actual budget itself. One question for people so that they understand is these numbers are a cash or accrual basis? These budget numbers are on the accrual basis. And I talked about the cash basis when I went through the cash flow during the time you were on your way here. Yes. I even introduced this, Dennis, and I'll do it again. People are saying, this is the budget subcommittee meeting. Dennis, hard work. So, here's the budget. You've all had a chance to look at it. If you have any specific line item, you know, I'm giving you a kind of a big picture. Now, here's the minutiae of the budget. If you have any specific line items, I have to answer any questions about them. I told you the methodology was basically use the actuals and carry those over to the proposed and be conservative. So, if nobody wants me to go through it line by line, I certainly.
Just a note, I see you set aside $2,100 for the Monterey Peninsula Water Management Authority. Remember, the other six cities of the Monterey Peninsula is part of the authority. We paid 2.1% of the overall budget. We're looking at initial expenses for that authority. It'd be roughly $100,000 to pay for the Dallas 3 convenience cellization plants. So, our total amount of pay would be 2.1%. I may be able to, maybe Seaside will buy 2% of that to the city. So, we have 0.1%. So, we have a voice at the table because we're not, we're not going to affect any decisions in a way at vote with 2.1%. So, I'll see if I can get that done. Say to somebody. But anyhow, that should hopefully suffice the entire year.
Something we, surprised nobody answered. We actually have money in here for an election. There's an election this year. I have that in outside services. And we have three positions that are up for reelection. And Mike Sicaro is apparently already bowed out. Seems like he's not, actually, he's not doing well. He has health problems, but he's not going to be running for council. So, we'll have at least one new face appear in this new fiscal year. So, there's money in here for the election. Money for ammunition has kind of dropped a bit because we spent it this year. We have money in here as well for new radios. We have to get new radios as part of the new next generation communication system. We just finished the paperwork today. We're basically doing a lease by that purchase there that's going to cost $25,000 for the next four budget years. Twelve hundred thousand dollars for all radios we need. And you've been presented the information and costs by the sergeant and chief previously.
Daniel, I don't know if you've gotten to page four or what page that you're on, but I'm clicking the wellness standard and I just was curious as to what that is.
We're part of a group of ten cities called Monterey Bay Area Self-Insurance Authority. And one of the benefits of our membership there is that we get $8,000 per city from the authority. So, it doesn't actually come out of our money. We're not funding it. We can apply it any way we want in ways that will help to reduce or prevent workplace injuries and therefore lower our workers' compensation costs. And what we've chosen to do here is we have the subcommittee of the employees kind of come up with a plan that will work for everybody. And most people have taken advantage of gym memberships.
Okay. Just curious about that. Thank you. I'll follow a little bit further down on item 20161, the special supply lease, where it was $5,000 and goes up to 25. Is that proposed?
That is, that is all due to the radio costs, correct?
Yeah. Got a couple of things. We were joking earlier about Councilman Alian's participation with the golf cart. But he actually puts a heck of a lot of work in. He's the chair of our budget committee. He works long hours coming down here and going through every one of these numbers. The council owes him a little bit of thanks. He has an extensive background in finance. We joke about it, but the bottom line seriously is he's done a hell of a good job in working. We have a, now they balance budget. We have surplus. All the cities in the county lost their real authorities. We lost ours. But thank God, we had no assets in there. We only had a couple liabilities. So, the fact that we've had such tough times for such a long period of time, actually in some cases, maybe from the short term, was an advantage to us for not losing. I think Seaside lost, I believe, over $6 million under RDA just pulled by the state. The state can't do your job. They refuse to do their job. They'll come to the cities and the county and steal the money from the RDAs there. So, they weren't able to do it with us. Again, thank God for that. But we've got, it looks like a fairly good budget. I'm looking through it. We've got the city manager's contract we've been talking about. A lot of work is done by, again, Councilman Alian, our vice mayor, Christian Clark. They've spent a lot of hard hours there along with the city manager. So, you know, we've been down for so long. Compared to the other cities here in the county, we're working pretty good.
I couldn't do without you, Dennis. Thank you. I couldn't do without you. One of the things that I'm still concerned about, in spite of the good work that Daniel's done and the staff have done in controlling costs, is that I'm still concerned about a reserve. We do not have what I consider to be an adequate reserve, although we've got some surpluses here. It's encouraging. But, you know, it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of money to run a small city. And it's predominantly labor. Even though we have a very small staff, I think what that tells me is that we have a very, we have a fairly rigid budget. And we have to spend so much to provide the basic services that the city provides. There's a lot of creative work that's gone into by the staff in figuring out ways to stretch those dollars. Using the gallon crew and whatever other services you're using for maintenance along the roadways. And by the way, I don't know about anybody else, but my opinion is looking better than it has in a long time. There's, it's, it's so good that I have people that are complaining to me about the noise that people are making at 8:30 in the morning. You know, they're making noise because they're out there working on the landscaping. And I know in the time that I've lived here, I lived here in 1993, the islands that I observed have never been maintained as well as they are now. The general appearance of the sea there is great. So, I guess my bottom line there is that we're providing what seems to be basic services. We continue to look for new sources of revenue and that's the only way that we're really going to build up. We're not going to build new, more staff in the near term at least. But we have to find additional sources of revenue so that we can weather some unforeseen circumstances.
Dennis is absolutely correct. What I look at is we have, we're going to have a reserve coming up very shortly. We have three major projects that we're working on, the council and the city manager. We've got a 17 acre site right now we're negotiating for. 360 acres out forward. There we have plus four qualitative RFQs coming in. We have, what, seven right now that have come in the desk. We're looking developing that. Plus, we have the golf driving range. Those are three major project areas that when one, two and eventually three come in there, they should provide hopefully with a significant additional revenue coming to the city to really, really build the city up. We can really become a jewel in this one. One of the things we will, as I keep saying, pay the streets with gold. You know, small staff, we've got everything built up and this initial revenue comes in here will reduce our deficits, financial acumen to help guide us in the right direction to ensure the reasonable approval. A lot of people would just be happy to see Nashville.
Your point is well taken, Councilman. And we do have to pass the budget by July 1st. And I anticipate coming back in probably three months and this picture's going to be different based on any one of the three projects that comes in. I was hoping to have information on the 17 acre site today. They're not quite finished with the work. Probably the end of this week. So, next month, we are going to have in fact another strategic planning session and kind of follow through with a couple of the items we talked about, one of which is to set a reserve policy for the city and work toward that goal.
I just wanted to make a comment. I thought it was interesting that, you know, in the Herald, we were, we had an article on increasing the wages with our employees and then two days later, you know, it kind of stopped and was looking at going bankrupt. So, it's nice to be in a position where, as you hear about all the other cities are struggling, their budgets aren't balanced and they're cutting, cutting, cutting. And it's nice to be able to sustain.
Any other comments by the council? Yeah, I think, Steve, what I heard, you know, other cities are, I paint them red for example. I can't remember exactly what it is, but they've looked at tiered system where many employees are going under a different contribution ratio for PERS. Again, I don't know who gets the credit for this, but the long-range vision was to keep the PERS rate at, Delray Oaks was 2%. And so, we have not been gobbled up by the huge PERS debacle. And it really is a debacle. It will probably cost the people of the state of California and the cities for decades to come because it just is not sufficiently funded to pay the 3% wages that are 3% at whatever.
Eight, ten?
Fifty. And some, that was higher.
That was a 3%.
3% fifty.
2% fifty.
So, you know, I think we've been very fortunate and somebody had the long-range vision, said we can't afford this and make it reasonable. And thanks to all the people in the city that work for the city that went on with it and agreed to stay on here and stick it out. So, real credit to the people, the staff, the city.
We have mayor's meetings once a month for all Monterey County mayors. There's 12 mayors. There's 12 months in the year. So, we rotate the city to the city. And I hear the other mayors complaining that they can't afford to cut the PERS benefits or whatever. People will leave, they'll flee the roads and so forth. Delray Oaks is an example of that we're not having. We agree a family atmosphere that we have here under We create a family atmosphere that we have here under the leadership of Chief Ron Langford, where you all feel like you're part of the family. Yes, the compensation does, is good as some of the other cities, but I think we make up more through the leadership, the camaraderie, the teamwork, the brotherhood that we have here in the city. And I think we, and we requested, we proposed five percent pay rates, just a small step in trying to raise the salaries up at least to the beginning of what some of the other salaries are around the peninsula. So again, with turnover, we have our police department is almost nothing because of the leadership and because of the teamwork you all have established together, and we appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah, I wrote something actually after getting my packet and going over it with, with Daniel and then I wanted to, to read this to you as I wrote. Councilmember, city manager, mayor, and public, I wanted to start off by saying I've looked over the budget and feel what's before us is fair and overdue. I'm proud to say that our city manager has put together a package for everyone at the city to finally get a pay raise that they haven't seen for four years. My interaction with the staff has been very positive and warming and I enjoy going to city hall. Our little city is on its way up and not stripped into overbearing retirements and laying up employees that other cities are facing and have faced. I'm proud that we can be optimistic and positive instead of pessimistic and negative. Daniel Dawson has brought such a positive mental attitude and the sight to see opportunities and capitalize on them. Daniel has positioned himself on many boards and has the influence and respect of others with whom he sits on these boards with, and I've seen this firsthand with these relationships at different meetings and functions. I'm proud to have Daniel Dawson as our city manager to look for his leadership with the upcoming endeavors the city will be ensuing. I hope the residents trust and approve the council's decision tonight on resolution two thousand twelve dash ten establishing salaries for the fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
Well, Captain Public, would anyone in the public like you to address the council on the issues about the budget? Okay, back to the, back to the council. Daniel, do you have anything else before we start the resolutions?
Well, I want to share the salary, you know, how, how the salary numbers were arrived at with everything in front of you. You know, we reduced Health Works employee, as you, you made or we not know, Terry Serrano kind of suffered a debilitating knee injury and we all sat down and decided it was in everyone's best interest that he take a disability retirement. And then we had further discussions, the chief and the staff, about actually taking advantage of the opportunities we have to use, the Gatlin crew and some of the welfare work crews that, you know, are just looking for stuff to, to do and, you know, as Councilman Rowland said, the park and the streets have never looked so good. So by having that disability retirement place, that freed up enough so that we could take care of our employees here, and that's really important. I mean, there's a reason why people stay here and there's a reason why people interact with each other the way they do. You know, I wish it could be, I wish it could be a lot more. I mean, quite frankly, five percent salary increase, we get, we get ten times more, we get ten times more work from the reserve officers that do pro bono work for us than, I mean, this isn't even close. I mean, they do so much extra work for us for free that, you know, my city gets that kind of cooperation and gets that kind of work from reserve officers like we do and that's really appreciated and this is kind of a token to show some appreciation and it's really important that we all recognize and take care of people that we have here because they do a lot of work. They do, you know, a lot of extra things that you don't even see, that you're not even aware of. So I just want to publicly thank the staff here. Yes, ma'am?
I have just two questions. So we're not going to replace Terry's position? We'll just have one public works?
That's correct.
Okay. And up at the top where it says two percent at fifty-five safety member and two percent at sixty, what does that mean?
Those are our CalPERS retirement rates, which people are, which other cities are now adopting as their second tier for new employees, which we've had all along.
Okay, so it's two percent at fifty-five years.
That two percent, so that means for a safety member, which would be a police officer, they can retire when they're fifty-five years old and they get two percent of their salary for every year that they worked here.
Okay.
But Dan, just to give you an idea for the, for the public, if you're not aware, the other states, when they go three percent at fifty, I mean, if somebody works for thirty years, they become a twenty years old and they're retiring at fifty years old, three percent thirty-year terms, those thirty years, that's ninety percent. So they're basically retiring, sometimes they have bump ups in the last couple of years. They're retiring at fifty years old at almost their entire salary. And they may, they may retire for another, another thirty years, take a second job or a third job. That means that cities not only paying for all their pay on, on the regular, the regular payroll, but all the employees that have been retired are paying roughly the same salary for them adding from item. It's, it's, it's no wonder more cities don't go, they're all going belly up right now. They can't afford it anymore. So again, with us, our retire, our personal retirement, so fifty-five to sixty years old, it's sixty percent, which is roughly go through the military. If you're in the military, you get the same requirement, sixty percent, or we stay in for like thirty years, it'll be seventy-five, not ninety percent.
Oh, and it's, it's even worse than that, Jerry, because what's happened is that because PERS doesn't achieve the investment levels that they've forecasted and used for their actuarial calculations, because they haven't achieved that, most cities, most cities have enormous debts to the PERS program. Daniel, is ours, is next to nothing or do we get a surplus back? Anyways, ours, ours is minimal. And, well, the Water Pollution Control Agency, for example, had, I hesitate to throw out a number, but it's something on the order of nine million dollars and it had the funds. So, you know, I might be wrong about that. It might be five or six million dollars. But it's still, so we're not confronted with that. We've, we've been blessed and we have a much smaller debt there, but this is a huge burden that is going to plague cities, county and state government for years to come.
Just for the historical part, it all started when the California Highway Patrol, the largest law enforcement organization from the state, got three percent at fifty. So sometimes you will hear it referred to as, we want CHP retired. And that's what started the law, uh, twenty years ago. Andy, do you have any more?
Well, while we're on pension, you, you may want to, well, I'll mention it, that the lead California cities is holding their, their meeting for this month at Tarpies in Delray Oaks, we're hosting. And they're going to have a pension expert talking. And the mayor and I were talking about this and he says, isn't that ironic? That the city with the lowest pension, that doesn't have all these pension problems, is hosting a talk on pension reform. So, Tarpies at six o'clock on Monday.
Anything else in the budget at all?
That's it. I mean, I have my contract. If you want me to put it up on the screen.
Well, I'll tell you what, what I proposed, it's up to the council's decision here. We have resolutions two thousand twelve, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, which are standard, every year we go through it. We've all had it in our packets, it's been on the public display. If you want to pull anything into discussion, we can talk about it in detail, or if you want to lump it all together and make one motion to pass all resolutions.
Well, Adam, the only question would be since Daniel's leave has been included.
Yeah, let's leave, let's leave member six, the employment agreement, the city manager outside. Just go through resolutions first, will you say that? If that's okay, through the house. Any, any comments about any of these before we go to the public? Okay, out to the public, any member of the public wish to make comment on resolution six, seven, eight, nine, or ten? Okay, back to the council, what is your, what is your pleasure, for a motion?
We approve six, seven.
Okay, the motion, we approve resolutions two thousand twelve dash six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, round the second.
Round the second, yeah.
All the favors, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion through unanimously? Okay, now we go to the budget workshop, four B, employment agreement for the city manager. Kristen, I guess you were part of that, the motion too, if you want to go through the background of that.
There it is, my employment contract for everyone to see in an open session in public, just the way it should be.
Do you want me to just go over the changes?
Well, just in general, and you and then just in general.
Okay, pretty much, you know, it was, we just made a few little changes and they're noted here in red. We, and we can talk about this, the agreement shall be three, we changed it from five to three years. If anybody wants to, you know, I'm open to, if we want to make that five-year term.
I'd love to make it a five-year term. I was looking at those also and, and I don't see, we have the, the one cent sales tax was passed for five years. I, I see a five-year contract to be more stable, gotten locked in, where you can't leave for five years, basically, without, you know, unless it's caused or whatever else on your side, on your side or our side. But I see more stability and I hate to go through this whole negotiation thing for three years when you go to five years. It's kind of, uh...
The car payments are five years.
So there's one for all, actually, you fall apart and be able to get another bit. I, I believe, the one thing about this tariff agreement, I'd like to see it go five years rather than two years.
Okay. So we're going to strike that again and change it to?
Well, I, I, I'd love to have Daniel around for the five years too, but the reason that I think we picked three years was that that was more in keeping with sort of the norm after discussing with some other cities. So that's why we picked three years.
Can we talk to the city?
It's in Monterey, which has ten. Yeah, well, they probably wish that they could have gotten that. I don't have a strong, I mean, Daniel's performance is such, and I trust, trust Daniel immensely, so I don't, personally, I have too much pride in the five-year contract.
Okay.
We can, we can still term him if he's qualified, that's right.
All right, and then by, by bringing the salary down to the twelve-five, that helps also with spreading out other prices for the other, other employees. Back, Dan?
Yes. I want to come back next year and offer another pay raise to the employees. I would like to be able to, I plan to do that next year.
There's always that possibility. We have other, we have more cash or more revenues coming in, we know we could, or more reserves, and more reserves. Just reorganize.
We, we changed it from two hundred and forty administrative hours to two hundred.
Can we explain to people what the two hundred hours administrative, please? Can you explain to people what your two hundred hours? Well, yeah, you know, that's fifty hours per grandchild.
It's not necessarily taken in hours. You can either take it at the end of the year.
You can either take it or get paid for it. It's, you don't fight vacation.
Can you accrue it over to the next year or is it?
No, it's paid out on June thirty, it's not used. That way it doesn't accrue any long-term life benefits. But it does say in the, in the agreement here that any leave not taken by the next June thirtieth shall either roll over into the following fiscal year or be paid to the public. We can change that because there won't be anything like. If you had any more grandkids due at the end of that, that'll be six, so I'm going to be running short of time. I, I'd like to see, I think that should stay in there. We ought to have, we ought to have the option, you ought to have the option to roll over and, but there may be, it would be appropriate, I think, to put a capital, but there must be some limits on what you could roll over. Could you help us with that?
Are you sure if you wanted to set a maximum limit that can be rolled over, are you going to incorporate that in? That's up to council's discretion.
Okay, well, I think there ought to be some limit on how it's going to roll over because that essentially what that means is either, either we're out without the services of the city manager or we're out the money, none of the two. So I would recommend that we have a, he can't roll over more than fifty hours. Twenty-five. How about eighty? Eighty? Okay. Negotiation, I love it. Oh, one twenty, one twenty, right? Eighty, eighty. Eighty, right. See any more council do this in an open session like this? Really great. This is the way it should be. That's what people don't like. They don't like all the secret stuff going on behind closed doors. Here it is, man. Let's do it all right now. Hi, Charlie?
Those are the little changes. I have, yes, a new, you have a different car, right? You have a different car? I see your old car, go away.
The old car is now the property of Officer Union. What's left of it. Does he have to replace the catalytic converter? Actually, this is a great story on how we save money and it's all due to the chief and this, the other staff here. We were looking for a replacement here because the catalytic converter went out on a Crown Vic. It's ten years old, got a hundred and fifteen thousand miles, got a cracked windshield, catalytic converter went out. The part is fourteen hundred bucks just for the catalytic converter. Well, the car blue books are probably a thousand bucks. So they went to get me a replacement car, another Crown Vic, and they found one, but by the time we got around to filling out the paperwork to get it, he had given it away. So the chief called up to Sacramento and he had a two thousand and nine Crown Vic, brand new. The Sacramento Sheriff's Department bought two of, they only needed one, so that was, had zero miles on it, a two thousand and nine sitting up there. And we paid twenty thousand dollars for a brand new two thousand and nine Crown Vic. Good work. Good job, work.
I was surprised he has a piece of junk.
He wanted that thing so bad.
It was a public.
Right, he was, we gave him a public option, we made up, I was just making lists with the bids. I personally opened a bid for the bid. And I'm not even going to tell you what he paid for it.
Okay, back, back to tact of business here. A little diversion here is good for the soul, but have any other comments at all regarding this contract?
No, I, I think the other than that, the, our city attorneys rolled over. What about three bid and two? Oh, that was three.
That was my idea. Okay, Jeff, you got any comments on the, on the? Out to the public, any, any comments to the public with regard to the city manager's contract? Okay, back to the council, need a motion to accept the contract with the noted changes?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the contract. With the noted changes.
And, okay, all the favors, anybody?
Just for the record, the changes are for a five-year contract, with respect to hours approved when the meeting can be rolled over to the next year.
Okay, all the favors, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Everybody in the public, motion through. Okay, good. We're, we're on our way along. Ladies and gentlemen, that basically concludes our budget workshop for the city of Delray Oaks. We have our city council meeting starting at six. Hopefully you can all stay open and enjoy the camaraderie until six o'clock. Thank you very much for showing up and for your, your consulting.